For a pledge and then a prayer by Commissioner Patton, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our gracious and holy Father in heaven, we approach thy throne this evening in the most humble manner we know how, as you look down upon us, your tender mercy to bless us with patience and to understandings and wisdom to conduct the business of our city and to make decisions fair and equitable to all people. Bless us in our efforts this night and all through our life. Deliver us from the evil one, in Christ's name. Amen.
We'd like to welcome everyone out tonight. First item is approval of minutes.
Make a motion, we accept minutes for minutes.
We have a motion, second, any further discussion? Those in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Post same, motion passes. Next is the bills.
Move to pay all bills.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Those in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Post same, motion passes. Not showing any old business, so we're getting into new business of ordinance.
We'll both keep a copy?
Yeah.
You want Kevin? Here.
I was supposed to keep one?
AV, you need a copy out the back?
I need one.
See what we got down to here?
Oh, she's not gonna have one?
They're not giving another one, go ahead. Larry, do you want?
Go up to Larry.
This is one of the ordinances we talked about sometime on the water bills and the landlord/tenant
issue.
Just make a, need a motion to approve, accept the ordinance.
Well, this would be the first reading.
First reading, yes. Make a motion that we accept the first reading of the ordinance pertaining to water bills and landlords.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second, on the ordinance. This is pertaining to collection of water bills from between landlords and tenants. Any further discussion? Those in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Post same, motion passes. Shelby, I'll get you a copy. This is the first reading, so we have to do another second reading of it. Okay. Next item, I'm gonna go ahead and move under new business, is something I think we've talked to most of you about. We found out that there was a change in our employee handbook made at some point, and there were some wholesale changes made, and I think one of them kinda got overlooked. But this has to do in regards to sick and personal days for our salary personnel. We have one that was grandfathered in, but two that's not under it, and I would like to go ahead and recommend we change that policy back to the way it was initially before.
You just wanna make back to the original way?
Yeah, back to the original.
So it shouldn't have been changed at the first place, right?
Right, it was just an oversight on our part.
Make a motion, we go back to the original?
Second.
We have a motion, second, any further discussion?
Thank you, Kevin, where you want?
Yes. Those in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Post same, motion passes. Okay, Commissioner Crump, you have anything?
No, not just only.
Okay.
I think, I think I've got people here that will talk about, my apologies, at the ages of 59 and 55, my husband and I are becoming parents to a 17-year-old. So I've been dealing with him, and I was like, okay, I'm running late, so Mama Jolene had to jump in and take over Mama DeeDee's again. But no, I think probably what these folks are here to talk about is probably what I would talk about, so we'll just wait and talk together.
Okay. Charles?
No, I think Mike, I'm not gonna let him bring it up.
Okay, you gotta do it. I'm good, I'm good, very good.
Larry?
No. Update the air packs for the fire department that we bought, they're in. Got them in, I think, two weeks ago, so we got a portion of them in this budget, and we'll finish up next cycle for the next one.
Okay. I will say too, and I did mention earlier, doesn't take any action at this time, but I did get a text message from David Stevens, our fire chief, they are in Sarasota, Florida, with the new truck.
Got pictures of it.
Told you, yeah.
Very nice.
So, they're doing the testing today and tomorrow, I guess they'll be back Wednesday morning, and then if all, everything pans out, the new truck will be set up for delivery to us. So that's a plus. Okay. Officer Shepard, do you have anything you'd like to?
No. I don't know. You know, I don't.
Mike?
Yes, we have one officer that has left us, his last day was December 31st, Officer James Sparks. I'd like to ask that y'all accept his later resignation, and that was December 31st was his last day of 2012.
I moved to accept the resignation of Officer Sparks.
Second.
We have a motion, second, any further discussion? Those in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Post same, motion passes.
And then I have an officer, certified officer, that I'd like to ask that you all would make a motion to hire, his name is Mitchell Graham, he's been working for 10 years, he's been working for us Sunday night, next Sunday night, and I'd like to ask that we started at 2150, and after 90 days, he goes to 26, and he is certified.
Is that what the other current officer of patrol, are you making, is that the same as the other patrol officer?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion, second, any further discussion? Those in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Post same, motion passes.
And today, today's his 40th birthday, I saw on Facebook.
The other thing I'm just, is that we met with KLC, they recommended a bunch of policy changes which will help us on our grade that we get, that we maybe get a little on our insurance, so I'll be working on those this next month, because there was like 23 of them, and still is dealing with the Rihanna Taylor deal that happened, and George Floyd. So I'll have that ready for, for y'all next, next visit, next visiting, and also I'll have the yearly tax for next, next month, when we meet again.
All right, folks.
You guys, are y'all going one at a time, or y'all going to the group, or what y'all doing?
Oh, I'm sorry, it, I haven't really heard anything you said since I've been here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Something like that, I don't know, cannot.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're, I think here at home, not as a group, but we're all here for the same reason, and that is the flooding on South Lafayette Street. I was here in 2020, and we addressed the problem, or we talked about it, it's got worse since then, continually worse, and they were, promises made to check into what could be done, what Beverdame could do about redirecting the water, or deeper ditches, or faster drainage, or whatever, needed to be done, and as far as I know, nothing has been done. I haven't seen anything.
We clean the ditches out.
I missed something, but.
Yeah, we clean the ditches out every summer.
Yeah, well, I've noticed the ditches, like the one going, but Tucker Street out that way, across under 231 there, I, every once in a while, look at it, and it appears it needs to be cleaned out every time, and I've seen no evidence it has, maybe refilling or something, I don't know, I don't check it every week, but it looks like it's needs. And then how about down through the amphitheater and all down in there, though, the ditches as deep as we can get them, and wide as we can get them, and where we can have, is this just headwater that's coming in too fast?
It's, it's.
It's not raining out fast enough?
But there's no place for it to go.
It's headwater, it's headwater that's coming in fast, and I will tell you, I said we clean the ditches out every summer because of the issue with the cornstalks, and I know we're all aware of those.
You're talking a bit too little.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I see you don't have mics up in this room.
Well, we clean, we work out there to clean the ditches out every summer just because of the issue we've had with the flooding, and of course, the cornstalks over the last, what so much last year's was, the year before was a problem. I spent the better part of last Tuesday on the phone with legal counsel through KLC and with Department of Transportation, trying to find out what, if anything, we can do, or can work with the landowner to remedy that problem, and I have found out, actually there's not much we can do. There is a thing in Kentucky state statute, along with all other 50 states, called the agriculture supremacy clause, which basically says agriculture does agriculture, and we have, there's nothing we can do to tell them what to crop, how to crop, building setbacks, anything, other than, unless they're doing a major commercial or industrial project. Because I had hoped to be able to do something that way, I even asked if we annexed the property, could we do anything, and it still falls under the agricultural supremacy law. So I have, we've been talking with the state, problems we have with a lot of the culverts on 231 on Main Street, that have bottoms in them, so obviously we can't make the ditch deeper than what the bottom of the culvert is, can't make the ditches wider than what the width of the culvert is, because again, that's gonna slow it all down anyway. We have worked through the park, we get down to just east of the bridge going over to the amphitheater, and then the creek goes through property that we don't own, on either side of it, someone else owns on both sides of it.
Who owns the rest of the business property?
It's a, yeah, we all, well, we're not even sure who it is, it's a bunch of heirs. But we are in the process of trying to obtain ownership of that property. When we get that property, then we can go ahead and clean it all the way out to Bruce School Road, but then we run into problems again where it hits individuals, and getting that done.
In the real world property.
Now, with that being said, I've talked to the state, I know they're planning some work on Liberty Road, it's supposed to be repaved, I think he told me this summer, and then they're hoping that by next spring, they will have funding available to go in and do some work on one of the bridges on it, and change it out to a culvert. We've also been doing some looking, checking with the railroad, there's two railroad trestles that cross that bridge, down in behind, I don't know if y'all familiar with, with Oswald Brecher lived, it's on Liberty Road, but it's on past where the old railroad crossing was at, there are two trestles back there. It holds, obviously, any, any kind of obstruction holds something back, so we're gonna reach out to the railroad, but the State Highway Department's already talked a little bit about it, to see if the railroad might be willing to take those two trestles out. They go to that sideline that used to go out by the Oak Thomas Industries and Tamerlane, and out to one of the coal mines. The rails have been paved over on Liberty Road, so I can't imagine why they're planning on using it again, but I can't answer that question, and that's what we're trying to find out, if they'd be willing to do that. Other than that, you know, I've talked to, through the Department of Agriculture, the water, all this water goes down through the park, and then there by the railroad, and comes into one, goes under Liberty Road, down by the railroad, out towards Davis Road, curves back around, crosses US Highway 62, somewhere around the Charles Barnard property, there's two, two creeks there, so I'm not sure, I think it's the first one, coming from town, goes back in behind the subdivision like where Levi Rice lived in the medical arts, back in behind the farm owned by Friselles and Ray Brackett, and then ties into Muddy Creek that crosses right there by McDonald's.
My goodness.
The water that comes from here goes all the way around the city of Beverdame, comes out of McDonald's.
And it stopped somewhere past?
Well, it can't go, because once it gets to a certain spot out there, it gets to a part, point where it starts backing up, it can't go out fast enough.
They explained it, and it did.
But that's private property, we can't touch that.
Well, and another problem we have, we can do it all in the, within the city, and we've done, we do that every, on occasion with the city property, keeping the ditches cleaned out. Number one, like you say, Kevin's talking about, it is going onto private property when you get out through there, but we have another issue that we have to deal with, is the fact that the Kentucky Division of Water and the US Army Corps of Engineers has jurisdiction over these creeks, because according to the Clean Water Act back in 1991 or two, they are considered waters of the United States. And getting a permit to clean out a ditch with the core is next to impossible. They have what they call point and non-point source pollution, they say, they will let you dip stuff out of it, but then you have to put it immediately into a truck and haul it off site, somewhere. If anything were to fall back into the creek, if you take a tree out and the dirt falls off the root stock, you're violating the Clean Water Act. So you're looking at, number one, private property, number two, a no town how long, a permitting process through Kentucky Division of Water and Corps of Engineers, and then the sheer cost of cleaning it out for that distance of time. I know a little bit about this, 'cause back in the day, my father used, had some excavators and a dragline, and we cleaned those creeks out back during the late 70s and the, through the 80s, until the laws changed in the early 90s, and that stopped all of that cleaning out that kind of stuff like that. So that's where we ran into a problem as far as going downstream, about all, all we can do is you have a big rain and try to wash it out the best it can, and.
But when we bought this property, if the streets flooded, and it flooded some, but since they cleared that land off, it took them trees out, now see, that cost it, so why can't we go back on the product there?
Well, now, I'm not saying that, and this, you as landowners, and probably your insurance company, could probably very well have.
Have you been in touch with the porters, or just about the cornstalks, can they, can they grind them?
They can, but that's, they're not required by law to do that.
I didn't say anything about the law, just said, have we talked to them, maybe they would do that as a courtesy?
I called Chad, and talked to Chad, he said that the intentions were to lime the fields in the fall, and they was gonna chisel plow, which was going to inject the material in the ground. The lime never got established on the property sold, therefore they did not chisel plow. He advised me that he wants to be a good neighbor, he's, he's gonna try to do everything, and Chad will.
Absolutely, that's what I'm saying, just as a courtesy.
Who owns that, that land there across from my house, that I can talk to, that I can go and say?
The first, no, no, the first section's right on Lafayette, Lonnie Hawes owns some of it?
I talked to Lonnie Sogut.
He did.
I was told today, he bought it.
It's the other side of Lonnie's, Lonnie's house there, that, that big field there. So Lonnie own it?
Well, according to the maps today, I looked at, he does, so I don't know.
I was told today that the porters.
Yeah, I saw the porters bought it off of Lonnie.
They bought it from the Brown farm.
Bought it or leased it?
Bought it.
I knew porters had bought the Leighton Brown farms, and then the other property owner was, Benita Snodgrass and Kent Snodgrass owns.
They own a little section.
A section in there that's right across from the Smith's house.
That was her dad.
There's nothing that, if you've talked to anybody in the state that had maybe any ideas, because if you go out, it seems like you're going out of Beverdame, this area that we've been talking about going around, is this all in Beverdame, or is it outside of Beverdame?
No.
Outside.
Have you talked to anybody in the state that had maybe any poll, or any ideas of what they could do?
That's where I spent, like I say, last week, when all this came up again, trying to find some answers, and I'm not getting any, any yet. Like I say, I've talked with the State Department of Transportation, 'cause I figured they would probably have more teeth than anybody, since US Highway 231 is a federal highway, and it was impacted like it was, and they are looking to try to see what remedies they can find, but at the same time, they told me not to get my hopes up too high, because again, farmland and farming operations have a lot of protections under the law.
But they allowed them to cut the trees and clear that land off real smooth, so it comes that direction. Why couldn't they, they made the water come that way, if it didn't come that way before?
Well, the rains we had these days are not like the rains when I was a child, you know, it would rain all day long with getting to two inches.
What, that's just what's the hardest part.
Now, we're getting five inches an hour, I mean, that's just.
Part of the problem, definitely.
Yeah, it's a big issue.
But I talked to somebody that before I bought the house, that lived there for many years, and they said, well, you know, get up on the road some time, but, but nothing like it is now, so either.
It's gotten worse since it was cleaned up.
But it's also some, you know, the lay of the land's been changed somewhere down here, it doesn't take much to clear it out, where it'll flow faster, and faster's the problem.
One of the, one of the guys with the Highway Department asked me about the possibility of planting a row of trees back on, the, back on the property, again, that's private property, we can't go off and do anything with that.
Well, don't the city own so much from the highway or the road?
Just to the middle, center of the ditch.
Yep.
Center of the ditch.
Yep.
And then it's out of your hands.
And that's, now, like I said, we've not given up, we're still trying to find some alternatives. Highway's still working on it, and I've got a meeting next, next week, end of next week with KLC again on their legal counsel, trying to see if they've come up with anything. So we're not, not doing it, it's just, we're trying to find something to do, and any loophole we can find.
And one thing you have to.
They're hard.
One thing you have to understand too is, we've got a multi-million dollar park sitting down there that the water goes right over the top of, we'd love for the water to get cleaned up as much as you guys would, but we haven't been able to figure out a way to do it yet. But we have, we have a, a dog in this fight also.
Absolutely.
You know, we have got a big investment down there that gets flooded, when yours gets flooded, ours gets flooded. We would love to get it fixed, and we haven't been able to do it yet. I'm saying yet, it may get done next year, five years from now, 10 years from now, I don't know, but I'm hoping it does, 'cause like I said, city of Beverdame has a big investment down there right now, and I hate for.
Some of these people would be.
I agree, but I'm just saying.
This is, I mean, this is gone over years.
And again, I'm not arguing that fact, I just want you to understand, we're trying to get it done too, it's not just you guys being upset, it's us too, we want it to get fixed.
I know the Smiths, I know you guys have been there since sometime in the 70s?
Oh, yes.
Is that right?
Where did y'all? 73, 73.
73, okay. So my best friend grew up on the opposite end of, so I remember the flooding in that area, do you see a difference now, based upon how it was back in the 70s? 'Cause I think it got in y'all's house.
They don't even compare, back then, you know, it would come across the road.
We didn't do nothing to drive away a little bit, but it wouldn't get under our house like it does now, and in our storage, and in our house.
It's where all that farmland has been cleared.
They had to take all of their heating and cooling, come out from under their house because it flooded, it was about to come in our house, and had to, I mean, the money they have spent through the years, it, it's just sad, it's so sad.
It's sad for everybody down there.
I was, I talked to somebody in the office a few days ago, and they, somebody was supposed to check with FEMA, and see if there's any help for, 'cause I mean, this, this cleanup alone, just, you know, the damage it's doing is one thing, but just the cleanup, especially with those cornstalks, it's just getting very expensive, so has anybody checked?
I think for FEMA to step in, the county has to come declare.
A national disaster.
The county did declare a disaster.
Charlie's been at work.
We're just trying to figure out if there was enough.
Right.
Disaster to get funding.
There's not people enough damaged, enough elders, I mean.
Yeah, and if it, and they're gonna find out there was other, if, and I don't know, I know they had a, actually they had more rainfall, I think, than we did in Mullenburg County. I don't know anybody what's going on there, Charlie was gonna check to see if their county issued a emergency, declaration of emergency as well, the more counties you get, obviously the better your chances are working something out with FEMA.
Is this something, I maybe I didn't hear right, is this something y'all are appealing to FEMA, or this county?
Would be through the county, because the county.
Through the county.
Through the county emergency management, yeah.
Oh, okay. Is there anything that I need to do, I need to call FEMA and complain, or do I just need to wait and see what they do?
Right now, I would say let's wait and see what Charlie finds out, because he's, he's the contact person with all of it, and I wouldn't even know where to begin to tell you to call, because anytime I've ever called FEMA, I get a recording, they tell me to punch them one for this, and two for that.
And I work with Jason Bullock, who's the Beverdame magistrate, and of course, we talk about this situation some too, and I know that the county is trying to do everything that they can to help Beverdame, to help this situation. It's like I've never seen it before, and I grew up here, born at Ohio County Hospital, so I don't get much more county than, than that, and it's, yeah, the last few rains that we've had, it's, I've never seen it like that before, it's been something else. But we don't like it at all.
Yeah, I grew up down in the south end of town like the others did, and we'd ride our bikes through the water back.
You grew up there, too, yeah.
About 1960.
You went down this street.
But I wouldn't want a kid to ride through that water now, 'cause it's too dangerous.
He lived next door to my best friend.
I lived closer to where they lived, I was 502 South Lafayette, and it was a lot closer where you all were.
It's a 23-inch, but now it'd get me a foot.
And it scared me sometimes, watching the water.
I wouldn't allow a kid to play in it, we use play in it, not now.
Oh, yeah, that was fun. Then, whenever you could wave through the ditch, but when it gets in the houses and starts doing damage.
Real elementary, I don't know, but during, while, like while it is flooding, we see the drains are stopping up with the cornstalks, can they be, like, dug during the rain, is it too dangerous to bring the equipment, like?
We, when it, when we was coming in for work, I can't believe I slept through it, but when we come in, we had issues, the police department told me that I was down there, so I sent the bike operator down there, and we was, we was plunging, trying to make everything go, you know.
Like during the active rain?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
So the, the dish that it feeds into, that goes by the amphitheater, we have it cleaned every year, you know, I was out $7,000 this, you know, 2022, from the bike at Patton's cabins to 231, it gets cleaned out every year, we get Meadows to clean it with their lawn stick, so, it's just so much silt in it.
Right, is there, have the, have any, has Meadows any estimate, given an idea of what they can do without, of course, touching those laws or anything?
Yes.
That we could try?
Yes.
You know, like Paul said, you can't go any deeper because of the concrete.
Concrete, yeah.
You can't go any wider, basically, because of the width of them, so.
Is Taylor Street, is that concrete?
Yes.
That one, that's what I was thinking.
Under 231.
Yeah.
Under Main Street.
We did drainage work, of course, which is nil, because as long as it can't get through the ditches, the drainage work we did from the building, under our driveway, to both ditches on both sides, it's dull and boring, because it can't drain anywhere regardless.
On a rain that size.
On a rain, yeah, absolutely, on a rain that size. But it seems like if the porters, I know you said they would try to work to do something with the cornstalks, but insurance is gonna end up subrogating against them, and they're aware of that, I'm sure, so I would think that would give them enough fire under, them to do something to be, to work with us, does that make sense?
You know, the park.
Because Main Street has already said, well, we will be finding out who owns, and they will be seeing that.
Have they?
No, they haven't yet, but that's exactly, I'm like, we're.
That's what you're, okay.
Yeah, that's what's happening right now, my, my bill alone for the Blue Star restoration, and we were close for two days to get it dried out, it was $20,000.
Oh, my goodness.
That's what I'm at right now.
Wow.
You know, at the park, when it was designed, the, probably 20 acres is designed for water to come out of the main ditches to flood our property, to alleviate.
To alleviate the water back.
So, you know, so every rain, we know we're gonna get a large substantial amount of water, but this time it got up in playground equipment, washed all the trunks rubber out.
Oh, wow.
We're out about $20,000.
The porch comes, the jet setting, the.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, no, I see it too, I understand it, but that's the only thing, only remedy I could see would be a quicker remedy that we could see happen, is working with the porters to get something done in that, the important thing, yeah.
The cornstalk. Yeah.
But even fixing the.
And they're great people, they're great people.
Even fixing the cornstalks is not gonna remedy the flooding, it's gonna help.
Gotta help, that's.
Yeah.
Anything will help, anything will help.
A hedge row planted back would help.
Somewhere else.
Yeah. If there was a ditch cut, lengthwise, descended in the railroad, railroad side, you know, catch, but here again, when you, when the railroad ditch fills up, it's still gonna.
Gonna back up.
Roll over it.
Well, of course, I didn't know they bought Lonnie's farm, that makes a little bit of difference, for them, I mean, they have access to the railroad ditch.
What scares me is with the chisel plowing, when you, when you chisel plow, you're taking the, the field material and injecting it in the dirt, so you get a big rain, and you still have washing, now you're gonna have mud, so. So.
But, like they told me when I was talking to them last week, the mud will slow down water.
That's true.
I mean.
Yeah, yeah. Would it do any good for any of these folks to contact the Department of Transportation, Agriculture, anybody?
I'll be honest, just talk to Charlie.
Charlie would probably be your.
Cause he's gonna talk to everybody.
He, he.
He's been going around assessing already.
Yeah.
Door to door, hoping.
No, he hasn't been to past parents' house.
I'd give him a call, maybe he missed you or something. I know he parked at the daycare, and he was out judging around, so maybe someday.
I'll text him.
Get over that phone now. I'm looking for, for thinking, like, I know what you're doing and working, and your phone calls.
And.
But we gotta keep moving forward on how to remedy the problem, because it's.
But.
I mean, regardless of being naked, I mean, it's, you know, I know y'all have just much investment, or more investment than me, but, you know, it affects my life.
But it, well, it affects these people's livelihoods just because it's their homes, that's, that's.
Oh, no, that's.
I just sit down here and talk to life, that this is just, it's not right, and you don't know how, how helpless you feel when your hands are tied on something that, I think I know, like, it won't fix the problem, it would alleviate it, but then when they tell me, you don't have the authority to do that, that hurts. I'm the first to admit it.
So, who would have to cut that ditch? The porters, even though it would go, it would take it away from us, and then if it got high enough, of course, it would flow back this way, which is still, I mean, digging a ditch might be worth it.
Can they do that through, they can on their property, they can't go on anybody else's property, right?
But if they bought Lonnie's, they have access to the railroad ditch.
That is true, that is true.
And that would not be, uh, kind of, it would be as much damage to getting sued by our insurances.
Because they, they had the equipment.
Exactly.
Can this ditch on sixty-two by the railroad route be cleaned out? Did you say it could or could not?
It's state-owned.
Well, again, the state can clean it out, but they have the same problem, you can only go so deep, because you get to two thirty-one, and then you get to, of course, Liberty Road, and then one on around. You can't go deeper than what the concrete bottoms are. Of course, when that road was widened, what was that, nineteen seventy-one or two, they weren't having these kind of problems. Uh, Main Street.
Yeah, like sixty-two up here by the railroad track.
Yeah, but that.
It always floods towards, toward McHenry, you know, it always floods up there.
Yeah, because McHenry got hit really hard this last week, too.
Why? Can that not be cleaned out because of the railroad, or?
Well, again, you can only clean it out so deep, because it's, it's still gotta go through the cover on Highway two thirty-one on Main Street.
And I should have asked this question earlier, but the ditches that are along state highways and the federal highways, will they let us do anything to them? Is that something we can?
It would have to be permitted, and the ditch that runs under two thirty-one down behind Veltor, Phil's Crop Service, that is actually a railroad company, and you'll have better luck pulling chickens' teeth, getting anything from them.
I mean, no chicken's teeth.
They don't. Well, and that's why I was hesitant, well, I'll go to saying about the railroad with the trestles, because I don't know that we'll be able to get them to do anything, but I, 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 I'm just gonna lay it out there, we're looking at anything possible we can try to do to alleviate it, and find help from somewhere, but, like I said, I'm just not getting the best of reports from anywhere I go.
Larry, you know, like, actually, like, set up maybe a formal meeting with the porters? Like, is that worth a shot? The kind of legalities that'll cost you this, to dig this, and we're going this far, and you think it may would really help the community? I mean, we have it.
I don't know where I would stand on that. I mean, Chad and I are good friends, uh.
For the city, I'm not saying you understand that connection, but city-wise.
But then it comes, again, his property, well, if he only, if he bought part of Lonnie's, he, part of his is in the city limits now.
You know, I, I just don't know, uh, I don't, I don't.
And all the legalities of it.
Yeah.
Maybe, any thoughts on that?
Can you make them fix them?
Now, I know we can't make them, I've tried that, but.
Ask them to come in for a meeting to go over maybe what possibilities we see could be going.
Well, if, if nothing else, just setting up a meeting with these folks and the property owner and the farmer to try to see if there is any.
We can do that, for sure.
If all parties will participate.
If all parties will participate.
And if our info is right, it would only be the porters, because they bought Lonnie's, and that's gonna take it all the way to.
Well, there's still that snodguous property, unless they bought it too.
I hadn't heard that.
So, Lonnie just keep his house and bond?
I was just over there, I, I wanna say it was eleven acres, I think several.
Aren't they tearing down the.
I don't, I didn't buy much Lonnie, I was there, so that's what I was saying, about eleven acres.
City has to come this way.
I can verify that it wasn't one of them.
We need to find out if they bought all the way to, uh, well, all the way to South Lafayette Street.
Then who would go about setting a meeting like that up? Would that be something that we would be in a position to do, or is that something that the property owners need to say, we would like to set this meeting up?
We can, I mean, we can reach out to the park, to the farmer, and see if they'd be willing to, I mean, we can't make them.
That'd be something we need to do, or something we would do is, like, here.
I, I have no problem with reaching out to them, see if we can set something up. That way, just be, you know, and try to act as a moderator for it, or to get them to see if they'd be willing to. We can do that.
I'll be there.
I would want, and don't take this the way it's gonna sound, but I appreciate you all coming, but I would want other residents and property owners here as well.
Yeah, I just hope that would be.
You know, is that, okay.
I don't know how to know them, any, out there, you know, I don't know.
Right, but.
Other than these folks, but, uh, uh, maybe we can find out who, who they are.
Or at least, go, 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 let them know, if we can get something set up, let them know, because it, it helps to have numbers.
All of them, or half of them?
Well, as many as you can get, it just helps with numbers.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's just the way it is. Did any of you others, did y'all have any insurance damage, or damage that was going to insurance?
No, there's no, not, not, not flood insurance.
Okay.
Or it's costing us alcohol.
Yeah, it's just, it's really my property, and it just costs a pig.
Well, well, the reason I was asking, so you're the only one that might have insurance?
Well, the way they're doing it is somehow, the west bin will decide how much percentage of water came in through doors, how much came up through drains, that's what they're figuring out, and they will pay depending on what came up through the drains, which we have pictures of it coming through the drains and all that. So, there's gonna be a percentage that I'm liable for, no doubt, what that amount is, I don't know yet.
Well.
And then they said that, um, if it is because of something else going on behind the property, that they will submerge.
Okay, that might, I, I would keep following up with that, because that's gonna be your, your, uh, best, uh.
And if that is the case, let me check, I mean, they, I don't care to tell, they actually farm our personal property, so we, I mean, like, they're great people, and I think if it's something that easy enough to, you know, and they have all the right ways because they own the land, they put a dead chance to see if it helps any, I think they'd be more willing to do it, if we all get on the same page, and they have the land to shut.
Well, we'll reach out to them and see if they'd be willing to come down here and set up a meeting with, and let you all know when it is. Is an evening okay to do it? Of an evening? Okay.
I just don't, you know, continue, then, my business won't sustain another, another round of it. Insurance will drop me, I don't even be able to get insurance, you know.
I understand. Had you had water in your building before?
I'm sure before I had it. We didn't find any mold or anything.
Well, I, I had never heard of it getting in that building, is why I was asking.
No, we didn't, they, we didn't have any mold, and of course, Blue Star came in and took care of it, they sat.
When, when'd you buy it?
We leased it, we had a three-year contract to purchase, and we've been there a little over a year.
Okay. You weren't there in twenty twenty then, that's what I was, but I, I.
I don't think it got in the building.
I'd never heard of it getting in the building there at that time.
Someone told me that it got in the storage buildings. Does anybody know if that's accurate? Because that might be, might get that fella to.
Uh-huh, that's the first I've heard of that.
Yeah, and I can't remember who told me that. I'll ask Jason and see if it was him.
I think maybe, maybe you're right. Like, the storage building decided.
Oh, that's, yeah, that's my building, too. No, I was talking about the ones with the orange doors. The guy from Butler County owns.
I saw manufacturers. You know about the one there?
What's that guy's name?
Two thirty-one.
One there by the cabins.
Ashley, yeah.
No, was that?
No, no, this is the, the storage units there, the girl Ashley owns.
That's Morgantown AMD, I don't know about that.
Someone told me that, but I do not remember who told me. I don't know if they were just speculating, or if it was.
At least, at least the son of a bitch who was digging up here now, and they didn't get it to some. Right there, one of your. There's one over there.
Up here, oh, he's up here? Okay.
We had water that we'd never had before.
At your house?
No.
At the church?
Church.
Did it get in your, in your?
Just a little bit, but we'd never been there.
I don't, I don't know.
How much?
Eight point one.
I've heard eight.
Okay, as soon as.
Okay, to something about the drivers you've made.
As soon as we can get ahold of them and see what they say, we'll start that.
You want to.
Start that, yeah. Do you mind, is it okay to share what your insurance company told you about? Okay.
And I don't care what they, I mean.
I know, I just, I just wanted, when you reach out to them, kinda let them know, you know.
That might give them some.
That's.
Try the ditch and see what happens.
That's what I'm wanting to say, it might give them a little more incentive to.
And is there anybody, this, I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but anybody in the group that would be a point of contact? Like, if you reach out to the porters and they say, yes, we would love to meet, you wanna be the point of contact, and you can let everybody know, and then everybody can start knocking on the doors, would that work, and is that how you're thinking?
No, rather name and number down.
Is that appropriate?
That's fine, yeah.
Have to do like we used to do the prayer lines in churches before we had texting.
We have one call.
We would call somebody, and then they were, had somebody else on the list to call, and they said had somebody else on the list to call.
AV, can I ask you a question about that, you know? Like, the subrogation, would they be protected by any of the agricultural laws? If our insurance, you know, they're saying we would try to submerge, would the agricultural laws protect them?
Submerge against whom?
Of the porters.
Landowners.
The landowners.
Uh.
They'd probably be protected by agricultural laws of some sort.
Yeah, if the, if the law, I haven't checked the law, but if Paul, if Paul, if Paul's, it's that broad, uh, then basically you're trying to submerge back against the landowner, uh, for basically an act of God, if you want to call it, with the rain is, you said it was eight inches?
Eight point one, yes.
Eight point one inches, and, and I'm not sure what the subrogation claim would be back against the landowner, uh, and I think it probably would be protected, actually.
But, like you said, he wants to be a good.
That's, that's, that's an opinion off the top of my head, which sometimes is the worst.
Well, because I, I have, I've been told the same thing, with the exception of, one thing that said might help is the fact that this has happened once before, back in June of twenty twenty, and they were made aware of it at that time.
That's what my insurance said, is it's been on one problem of the cornstalks, and it's, you know, and I think that's what they were.
So, there is, she, well, I'll bet, I'll tell you what she told me, she said it's gonna be a long shot, but she said there is a possibility they have negligence, because they knew there was an issue, and a potential issue, and they did not do anything to.
Well, I know, let's, let's throw the cornstalk board out of there, because they actually have beans in it this year, so.
So, this year, so I could work out this year, after they just came through.
Let's, let's, let's just call it.
Deber, well, I'm just.
Because when, when you say your cornstalk stopped up my ditch or whatever, they're gonna say, ah, we didn't have corn this year, so let's.
They had corn last year, didn't they?
Ah, they didn't.
In twenty-one?
The beans, twenty-two.
Twenty-two with beans and all those cornstalks still?
Yes, yes.
So.
No till.
Yeah, I knew they did no till.
See, no till was a big practice, because of the roach.
Yeah, I know, I know.
But that doesn't, yeah, if you have eight point one inches, it's not gonna help, that's not gonna help them, no till.
I thought they had corn last year, and beans the year before.
So, that's in the cornstalk caused the city to have to pour money to clean that up, drinking.
Oh, yeah.
It's pretty significant.
Yeah.
It is pretty significant.
But it's coming from everywhere, it's not just coming from that.
Well, and I, and I'm gonna say, and I'm not saying this to be smug about it, but technically, all we have to clean up is what's in the street and the ditches, and, and, but, with that, but, that's what we're, we want you to push it out, so we can get it, we're trying to help to get that out.
We need that.
And, and I said, I didn't mean that to sound the way I knew it sounded, but, uh, we wanna do anything we can to help, and that's something we can do to help. We can get it pushed out, because if it's on us, it's ours to clean up, kinda like the lead deal and stuff. But there's, there's some things we can do, because like I say, you can bring it to us, we can't go get it.
Or a base scenario, we can't get anything worked out. Could that, could you find that as the city's attorney, they'd be negligent with their debris, and that it does that to the ditches? I mean, is that something the city could?
Most likely. The only way you will find that out is to actually get a lawyer and take it to court and see where the, see where the judge or jury goes with it.
Yeah, they won't volunteer. You can assume that the landowner, or the landowner's liability carrier, neither one are gonna voluntarily pay anything. And, and do remember that somebody for, to, to support that claim, somebody would have to have, uh, in place, uh, somebody that has an expertise with regard to the water, the amount of water, what the ditch's capacity is, what effect, if any, that the cornstalks had on the increased flooding. You'd have to have somebody that actually conducts some type of study to determine whether it is a minor cause, the most major cause, or somewhere in between. And you can find experts that testify on these issues, but you'd almost have to have one.
Would we not agree that the cornstalks are the most major cause right there beside my building? I mean, I've got the pictures of them digging out. I mean.
It is, it is, it is, it does cause the, the ditches to get full, but the water has nowhere to go. That's the reason the flooding comes in the first place.
Sure.
If it had a place for the water to go, we wouldn't have any flooding at all.
But it was, but it was stopped up there.
I agree, and I understand, but it's still, it might have helped it a little bit, but it's still gonna affect it.
Every little bit counts.
Yeah.
I agree, I agree. I'm not saying, look at it realistic. Look at it overall.
But when the rain fell that, that much, that quickly, if it was able to move, it would not have backed up that high right there.
Correct.
And then Larry said.
Well, well, in your opinion.
In my opinion.
I would stress that, but we're not experts at it. I've dealt with water and water flow all my life, but, and I can't imagine that that wouldn't help, but I can't say that.
You have to say that could say it.
Yeah.
You understand?
Well, reason, reason Los Angeles built that river, you know, the concrete river they've got in the middle of Los Angeles, is for the water to get out of there. That was the whole reason they built that.
That's a good idea.
Well, I'm serious. That's why they built that in Los Angeles, was that reason.
Yes, and that is a great idea.
Yeah.
Personally, I like. But you, I mean, how else can you, you can't downplay the drain that's stopping up with those cornstalks coming out.
No, I, I agree, but what they're gonna say is, well, yeah, but you've got cornstalks certainly like that, they're still permeable, so water's still going through. So did that cause?
Not the amount.
I, I, I know. I'm, I'm kinda playing devil's advocate. You're gonna say, did that cause a ten percent? Was that twenty percent of the cause? Or was that seventy percent of the cause? And that's something I can't answer.
And is that to study that?
That's gonna have to have some kind of expert. And I don't know.
Would that be beneficial to the city also? Would they find that out?
Yeah, it should.
Probably not till it was at court. Just because finding somebody that, for one reason, they're gonna, why, they're not gonna come down here, put their name on something unless there's a reason and they're getting paid for it. That's just the way that, am I wrong, AV? That.
You're right about that.
Let me ask a real silly, simple question, but how many cornstalks are left out there? My goodness.
They just come from everywhere. They're not just coming from that.
Well, there's no, you don't even know where they come from. We have no idea why.
But if we were to build, say like the LA thing, if we were to build that all the way around and it got over, you know, we built it all the way around the city and it come out at McDonald's, it's still gonna back up because McDonald's, from there on, is not gonna be able to handle water flow. There's so much water coming down at one time. You have to have a pond or a lake or something for it to go in. And there's just not enough of that around here to absorb that much rain that fast.
Well.
That's the main.
And there's not enough elevation difference either. It's, it's all flat.
I've always wanted a water park, but I didn't want full of cornstalks.
You didn't want to wash the crumb rubber off the park either, didn't you?
No, no.
Well, Sandy, there was a pond back there on that farmland. There was a pond back there and it's been filled up.
It's like an lake, not a pond.
With cornstalks through the years.
Oh.
They're trying to fill up a pond back there. That's where your cornstalks have come from. There was a pond back there.
Oh, were you aware of that?
I knew there was a pond back there. She told me the pond back there had been filled up.
Larry, maybe we need to build a lagoon back.
No, I, I guess my question is, is if we try to get the water out, it'll be quicker. And it goes on AV's property downstream. Is AV gonna be back?
To us, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's the way it works. Just keep, you gotta add some trouble.
Well, one of the problems with diverting the water, Kevin and I were talking about it. If you divert the water from its natural course, you better darn well know.
Where it's gonna go.
Where it's going.
And what it's gonna do.
You're gonna have to be able to contain it. Because, because if you divert it and instead of flooding their property, it's flooding a whole bunch of other areas.
They're right the same.
You're in the same exact situation.
And there's, then you know you're liable for that.
And you, you're all right.
That is, that one is one thing that this, with agriculture or anybody, you can do, is if they change the course and flow of water.
So would it, would it not be beneficial to the city to hire somebody to come in and do some consulting and to see the lay of the land and what, best thing to do?
We're gonna be doing it with core engineers, isn't it?
Well, and, and again, this is gonna sound bad. I hate to do that because I know what they're gonna tell us as far as cleaning out all the way to Rough River. And I know that is virtually impossible, not only from a financial standpoint, but from the standpoint of getting all your permitting and approvals through the core engineer and division of water.
So you don't think there's anything to be done closer around to alleviate the problem without taking it all the way to?
Well, again, where would the water go? Even if we get it to where it's running faster, if it runs faster, just do spot and stops, it's gonna back up anyway. It's gotta have someplace to go.
I, I understand.
Well, but you, but you have to realize.
The problem is, it's not going anywhere.
Yeah, but you have to.
And it's not full on that end. Getting that much water in that, that short amount of time. It's, it's not stopping because it's full way over this way.
It's stopping because it's flooded.
It's stopping because it's not moving past this area. So we can't keep saying that, oh, well, still don't have anywhere else to go. It's never even made it there.
Well, actually, there was some car rescues where people were in water, where it's flooded before out there.
Overall, everywhere, yeah.
Further down from us. I mean, just cause the cornstalks is here, it was flooded down there too.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? And, and I agree with you. I, I know what you're saying.
But I'm sorry.
But it did flood down there.
If it was because the water had nowhere to go, it would be flooded a lot more areas than it would be.
Well, I think that's why you're seeing areas that never used to be flooded, getting flooded. And getting up higher than it used to get.
All right. So hiring some of the city, hiring somebody to do some type of checking everything out is out of the question.
Well, I'm gonna say it's out of the question. I just don't know that it's going to solve any problems and.
But we'll never know if somebody doesn't check.
Well, but I'm not saying we won't look into it.
All right.
I'm just saying, yeah, I just, from my experience and with, I just don't see it.
What about the railroad? What, what, what do you call those things out there on Liberty?
The trestles.
Trestles? What's, if that, would that?
Well, it can't hurt.
Help?
I don't know that it'll help, but it can't hurt.
Yeah. So that might be an option.
So you already, you've already talked to them.
State Highway Department's been reached out to them.
I think that's what we're just wanting to talk. Now, we know it's not gonna be a quick remedy. We know it's not gonna be a chief remedy. It might be something we have to do ourselves and y'all don't at all. We just wanna make sure we're forward thinking here.
Trying to find a.
Exhausting every possibility that we can do. So meeting with the porters, you're talking to the highway patrol about the, or the.
State.
About the trestles and state, I mean.
Yeah, as soon as we talk, we'll try to reach out to them tomorrow. See if, yeah, if you don't care in the morning, that way you can get in quicker than I can. Go ahead, find out between two if they did buy Lonnie's and see if, see if they bought Snyder's. They bought Lonnie's, they might have bought it, too.
For an individual, it'd be bare tail.
We're gonna have to start building like they did in Florida on legs. It got higher at our house than I've, it's ever, ever, ever got.
Well, Paul's house, didn't water get under Paul's house not too awful long ago?
There's a car.
Yeah. His house is built on Paul's.
That's normal out there.
And he thinks there's no way water can get there. And he thinks there's no way.
And then it gets under there. Yeah.
And I know y'all have a huge investment over there. You're looking to do the best, too, but.
Well, and it's.
You know, we need to see the progress since it's been on, y'all said rain's getting worse. And then we even have to remember, it's not gonna get any better.
He's bought.
Well, I was in Florida during the hurricane, both hurricanes, the end and the other one.
Well, did it broke the car?
And I firsthand saw what.
I don't think it did, but it could've.
Our lack of forward thinking ditch. And they're never gonna recover something. That city, that city has lost probably seventy percent of its ability to make income.
Which state?
The Daytona Beach down there where the hurricanes hit. The first one was bad, the second one was worse.
So there's.
It was really bad.
You didn't take the first house before.
I got there the day after the one minute.
So who, who've been talking to you or Larry or both?
I haven't, but.
Have you been talking to Charlie?
I'm gonna tell you this year.
Who's been talking to him?
I'm gonna take in lane.
Cause I wonder if he's aware of, like, sit behind me. He got in three inches. It's a nice car.
I would, I'd love to go out there. I wanna go to Montana.
See, didn't get in here.
I was afraid it would, but I wonder if the concrete.
Well, but I mean, it almost got in here in twenty twenty. I mean, cause I was down here.
I remember.
Is it Montana?
I don't care anyway.
We all have names.